Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first meeting of the City Council, Wednesday, January 3rd, in 2018. Roll call, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Brindle, here. Member Fisher?
Here.
Members Staunton?
Here.
Members Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Havlin?
Here. Council members, we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Manager Neal, any additions, changes on the agenda? I think we had a HRA.
That's correct, Your Honor. There is a proposal on the HRA side, but not on the council side.
On the HRA side, not the council side?
Correct.
That would be to add a... What do you want to put it under as the last item before adjournment?
We don't adopt the HRA agenda yet.
Right. So, we would adopt the HRA agenda just during that?
During that particular meeting.
During that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, and we've got language here on a motion to...
All right, very good. Okay. Any changes on the City Council portion of the agenda?
No.
Okay. With that having been said, anyone on the council wish to modify the agenda at all? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, as shown.
Second.
A motion, second, to adopt a meeting agenda, as shown. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council regarding an issue that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one coming forward. Next matter is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Stewart?
I'd like to remove item B, please.
All right. With the exception of B, is there anyone else that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Having heard nothing, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda with the exception of 5B?
Second.
A motion, second, to adopt a consent agenda with the exception or the exclusion of 5B? Discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then, 5B is a proposed designation of an official newspaper for 2018. Member Stewart?
I just wanted to pull this off the agenda to call attention to the fact that we have been struggling with our newspaper and how to get it distributed to everybody for years now, really since before I got on the council, I think. And this past year, I think we've made tremendous progress. The Sun Current is now distributing via mail, and it's possible for anyone in our city who wants to get the Sun Current to sign up for it. It's very easy to do on their website. But I want to commend the Sun Current for the hard work and the creative solutions in getting that done. I also want to commend Member Fisher for doing the work to represent us and liaising with them in making that happen. So, I'm just so impressed, and I'm so pleased that anybody who wants to get that newspaper now can get it, and it's been a frustration in the past. I think we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you, Member Stewart. Would you move that matter, 5B?
I will move it, yes.
All right. We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, on 5B, which is Resolution 2018-01 Designating An Official Newspaper For 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, moving on to the next portion of the agenda is special recognitions and presentations. We have none of those this evening. Moving on to the next portion of the agenda, we have public hearings, and we have two public hearing matters in front of us this evening. And Director Teague has a first matter involving a preliminary and final rezoning request involving some properties on Macaulay Terrace. Director Teague, good to see you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Here we go again.
Here we go, first of the year. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a rezoning request. It's a rezoning from R2, our two-dwelling unit or duplex zoning district, to R1, where single-family homes are allowed. This site is located on the far west end of town, and I see the graphics not showing up very well, but it's just south of the crosstown and east of 169, west of Arrowhead Lake, located on Macaulay Trail. The property is currently vacant, and it holds the R2 zoning designation. All of the homes along that frontage road there are zoned R2, where duplexes are allowed. The site is currently vacant and still held in ownership by the Macaulay family. They also own the property to the south. For whatever reason, these two parcels have not developed since it was originally platted many years ago. The applicant has entered into a purchase agreement with the Macaulays to purchase potentially both of the lots and build single-family homes. The north lot, this is what they would like to build on that northern lot. It would conform to all of our setback requirements. Grading and drainage plan been reviewed by our engineering staff. A more detailed plan would be provided at the time of a building permit. At the planning commission, there was some confusion about whether a single-family home would be allowed in the R2 zoning district. Our zoning ordinance has some language in it under the conditionally permitted uses that speaks to expanding or tearing down and rebuilding an existing single-family home in that zoning district. We actually don't have any single-family homes in the R2 district. That language came from, you may recall, back a few years ago, and we couldn't process variances. And we created an out for people through a conditional use permit to tear down a home and build it more than one foot above the first floor elevation, given some of the floodplain issues that we have across town. When we rescinded that ordinance, we didn't take that section out in the R2 district. The city attorney has reviewed that part of the code, says that the code is clear that a single-family home is not a permitted use in the R2 district, and that we do need to go through this rezoning process, and recommends that we delete that section of the zoning ordinance. So, we'll move that forward with the planning commission. In terms of the recommendation, both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the rezoning. We find that with the single-family homes coming off of Macaulay Terrace, the homes off the cul-de-sac here are all single-family homes, being more characteristic of the cul-de-sac, where the R2 lots generally come off Macaulay Trail South. So, we believe that the rezoning would be consistent with those homes on the cul-de-sac. So, with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
Good. Questions for Director Teague. Member Brindle?
Thank you. Carrie, would you... We have the two empty lots, and which is the third lot that's owned by this builder?
It's owned by the Macaulay family, not the builder, is this lot right here at the end of the cul-de-sac. These are the two lots that would be potentially developed with single-family homes and proposed for the rezoning.
All right. Because I thought that the text in the information we had said the developer owns that third lot?
It's the property owner that owns, again, that southernmost lot off the cul-de-sac.
Okay. All right. Okay, very good. I just wanted clarification.
Other questions at this point in time for Director Teague? Okay. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to this matter? Either in favor or opposed, or wants to inquire, ask a question to the council with regard to the proposed project or subdivision? Actually, resolution? Yes. Good evening.
Cindy Edwards, 6449 Macaulay Terrace. The house that's on the end of that long driveway, and what we don't know is what's going to happen to the not buildable or not planned-for lot, because our driveway runs right along that piece of property, and we're not really sure what the plans for that are. And we wondered if the developer had more... Is it going to be purchased by the developer? Both of those lots are for sale, so we're not really sure what's going to happen to our house and our driveway as a result of this.
How your house could be affected, do you mean?
Right. There's a strip of driveway...
That's... Your hand isn't showing up on the screen.
See the mouse in front of you?
How do I do this? Where's my mouse? Here we go. This is our driveway, and this is our house. And this is one of the... Oops. All right, back it up. Next, back. We're all for the R1, and we think that's a great idea. I think that's too small of a lot for families to live on, so I'm not objecting to that. We just don't know where... The cutout is right along in here for the driveway, and if they're going to build right up against that lot line, we're not really sure what happens to our driveway. This is the access point for this house, for the Macaulay property, where Jim lives, and we're here, and this is our access. We're really not sure how that's going to get developed and what the plan is to access that property. I don't know if there's any...
All right. Yeah.
It wasn't anything in any of the documentation.
Yeah, I'll take that question, and then we'll take it not only under advisement, but we'll address it when we get done with the public hearing. Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? All right?
I can speak to her point.
If you want to come forward and testify, we need your name and address, please. You're sure welcome. Come on forward and use that side microphone first.
Sure. Lindsey Melander, where my husband Ian and I are proposing to develop 6453 as the home that you saw previously on the screen. 6451 will be purchased by our builder, and his plan is to build another single-family home there. And to speak to your point, do you mind if I use the mouse?
Yeah, you can go ahead and go over there. That'll be helpful.
So, he had mentioned to me that the driveway for... So, our home will be on this lot here with the driveway right over here, and his driveway will be right here, and the home will sit facing in towards the cul-de-sac. So, your driveway won't be affected. It's going to be a separate driveway.
Between your house and the driveway?
It'll be... The access point will be right here, and it's going to go straight in, apparently. That's what he had shown me. So, I have the drawing for that. I can show you it later, too.
We have an easement agreement. We'd be willing to talk that through.
Sure, yeah.
All right. Ms. Melander, thank you. Anything else? All right, anyone else wish to testify regarding this matter? All right, is there... Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing from the audience, nothing further? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Director Teague, you were going to comment on that curb cut as well. I think it's embodied in the resolution that a curb cut permit must be obtained from the city engineering department. I'm assuming that the curb cut that would be obtained from the engineering department would address the sensitivities that Ms. Edwards is worried about.
It would, and the Edwards own that strip of land where their driveway is located, so that new home to the north wouldn't be located on their property at all. So, it... One shouldn't affect the other. It would be somewhat in close proximity, but they would not need to go over their property to gain access.
All right. Okay, we've got... I had a question for you, Director Teague. In the resolution, under the conditions portion of the resolution, that would change the zoning from R2 to R1. Number four, I was wondering if that was a bit vague or if you thought that was clear enough. It says, "There shall be no increase in peak rate or volume to neighboring private property."
Of water.
Yeah. Well, I understand inherently it means "of water," but should we have the words "of water"?
We could, sure.
And I think it probably got drafted that way because of the language of three above it, but nonetheless, I think it would be good to increase or enhance it by adding the words "of water."
I have...
So that it would read, "There shall be no increase in peak rate or volume of water to neighboring private property."
Yep. And I have just a follow-on on that.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. In the engineering report, inasmuch as we don't have a plan yet, which is a good time for us to be discussing this, it says currently proposed stormwater plan is not acceptable because it does not control any new runoff from entering neighboring private properties. And so, since we have these three adjacent, roughly adjacent properties there, I wonder if it would be a good idea, since in the short term it's possible that two of those would be redeveloped, to come up with a stormwater plan that covers all three properties? Is that possible to do, or do we have to do it one property at a time?
Director Milner?
Councilmember Brindle, it would be possible if all three property owners are willing to work together.
Okay.
It's difficult if they're not, and they're coming in at different timeframes and those kind of conditions. So, it's possible. Depends if they're all talking now and willing to work together.
Yeah. It makes sense to me that it would be a coordinated approach, so if it's at all possible.
Director Teague, another question for you on the ordinance, proposed ordinance change. It suggested that we handle that on a first reading basis. What we'd be doing there is amending the city zoning map from R2 double-dwelling unit district to R1 single-dwelling unit district. It doesn't appear that the proposed change in the ordinance is controversial. Would a waiver of second reading be appropriate?
Mayor, members of the council, we would ask that you just give first reading. We need to post the ordinance on our website for 10 days, so it needs to be posted up before we can give a second reading.
All right, very good.
And that's just for the zoning map amendment.
Okay. Both these are handled by voice vote, simple majority. Could we handle these, Mr. Knutson, in a single motion?
Yes, Mayor, you can.
All right. So, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-09 and grant first reading to ordinance 2018-01?
So, move...
With the changes recommended?
With the changes, yep.
With the changes.
Second? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Member Stewart?
Yes.
All right. Further discussion?
I do have one...
Member Fisher?
I want to get a clarification. This came up a little bit in the planning commission notes. Isn't it... Wouldn't it be typical in many cities that if you have an R2 zoning, that a lesser R1 could just be built in that area? Is it a little... Are we unusual in that way?
Yes, we're very unusual.
Well, we love to think of ourselves as...
Yes. The planning commission considered an amendment to allow them, oh, three, four years ago. They decided against recommending that to the city council. I think part of the thinking was we should preserve some of our R2 properties for the potential for affordable housing centered around a lot of that. However, since that time, we've been seeing a lot of tear-down rebuilds of duplexes, and they're anything but affordable. We've seen them anywhere in the... For each side, anywhere in the $600,000 to $800,000 range.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a... Any further questions? Otherwise, we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, one more public hearing matter, and Director Milner has this.
Particular public hearing?
Director Milner, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. We're here to consider a vacation of a street easement at Glenhurst Avenue. It's embodied in Resolution 2018-10. This Glenhurst Avenue was platted in 1957 as part of the Morningside Manor plat. You can see that on the right-hand side. In 1968, we worked together with a stormwater agreement with the city of St. Louis Park, and we constructed Weber Pond. You can see Weber Pond in the background of the words "right-of-way to be vacated." That's Weber Pond. So, Glenhurst Avenue goes right through the middle of Weber Pond, and it collects a majority of the stormwater in the Morningside area. So, the applicants, 3912 and 4,000, 42nd Street, are looking to vacate this portion of that right-of-way, red-hatched area. We have no issues with it as long as it's contingent on dedicating drainage and utility easements by both those property owners for that storm sewer pipe, and they also need to dedicate some utility easements for the private utilities, where there's some utilities towards the north end of each of those lots. So, the city and private utilities don't have any objections to it, and we would recommend you vacate the requested street easement contingent on dedication of those drainage and utility easements and approve Resolution 2018-10.
All right. Questions for Director Milner? Member Fisher?
So, the difference, if you don't have a street right-of-way, you have a utility easement, what would be the setback difference? Like, right now, there must be a setback from the street right-of-way. So, how much would the property owners then gain, some ability to, if they wanted to add on or do whatever?
Exactly. We'd take about half that area for drainage and utility easement, so they couldn't do anything within that area. The reason the applicant asked is that 4,000 address, their garage is in the floodplain, and with a little extra room on that one side, they can move their driveway over and build a new garage out of the floodplain.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Milner at this point in time? All right, stand by. We may have some more. As I mentioned earlier, this is the second and last public hearing matter this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and inquire regarding this matter or testify? Good evening, welcome.
May I?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Bruce Douglas. I live at 3915 West 42nd Street, so I'm directly across the street from the proposed vacation. I think that the director mentioned why the property owners wish to have the street vacated. I would point out, however, that care really does need to be taken to maintain the easements. And if I may just use the pointer.
Certainly.
I trust that I won't mess it up for you.
Well, we can retrieve it.
So, emphasize something, help me. Certainly. This may not have been brought out in great detail. My property is here. In the corner of my yard is a drainage ditch that drains from all over the area here. The pipe goes across here laterally to this, across my neighbor's property, up Scott Terrace, and the water all goes into here and then into Weber Pond. So, I don't know exactly why the need to vacate the street has come up at this point. We've lived in our home for 38 years. I can appreciate the fact that somebody may want to build on this area, but there's quite a lot of easement issues here with the pipe. Right here, there's a huge... There's a big drainage access thing right here sticking up out of the ground. I'm not sure exactly where they would put the garage and so forth, considering that the driveway cut is here for that property. This kind of came up suddenly and caught us by surprise. I'm not sure why, after all this time, there is a need to vacate the street and change things, but certainly care needs to be taken to maintain the right of the city, the easements and so forth, for all of the pipes and the utilities and the drainage that is in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Settler. We'll take that up. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Public hearing is now closed. Director Milner, do you want to address the issue raised by Mr. Settler, which is an important and interesting issue?
Yeah, very important. So, maybe explaining a little better. Imagine this red-hatched area cut into thirds. We're going to protect the middle third of this for those pipes. Nothing can be built on top of those pipes or over those pipes. It's basically about 10 to 15 feet on each side is going to be vacated for the street right-of-way, and then we're establishing drainage and utility easements over the pipe where nothing can be built, so nothing will change, and we'll have the access we need to maintain that pipe in the future.
Member Brindle?
Um...
I saw your light go on, or maybe it was on.
It was on, sorry.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No, that actually was my question, and that is, looking at the area to be vacated, would it be made obvious what they can and cannot build on? And so, that was my question.
Yep, they've been assisting us. They've been providing all the legal descriptions through their surveyor and working with our department, so we are establishing those bounds, and then when they come in for permits, if they decide to do anything, we'll be reviewing those permits.
Member Fisher?
So, Director Milner, at our council meeting last year, I think our last meeting, we talked about a variance on a property that actually had an easement for utilities through the property as well, and that had a setback required on each side of the utility, which is very typical. So, really, in a way, the street right-of-way is overkill in this case. I mean, because there's really no other purpose for this other than to protect that utility.
Correct.
So, if we make this change, it'll make this utility like every other or many other utilities around the city. Nothing unusual really about it.
Correct.
If I'm understanding right. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Milner? Mr. Knutson, in looking at the resolution, you know, it doesn't have the level of detail in the legal description or the description of what's being vacated. You know, when Director Milner talks about dividing it into thirds, it seems to me that we'd be best served by having a resolution reflect that type of division. And then I'm also wondering about whether the language in paragraph two is sufficient to protect that drainage line that Mr. Settler referred to. It doesn't say specifically drainage. It says electric or telephone poles and lines, gas and sewer lines. It's not a sewer line. Water pipes, which may be a little bit vague in this situation, mains and hydrants, which causes you to think more about potable water than it does water, stormwater draining into Weber Pond.
That's... Mayor, that's the standard language, but we're getting more than that. The vacation is contingent upon them giving us the drainage, the new drainage and utility easements. This preserves it over the existing, but they're giving us a brand-new drainage and utility easement. That is the condition of the vacation. If you wanted to, you could insert that in the resolution.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about. I had to scroll back up to find that language in the whereas clause.
You could say that the following described right-of-way is hereby vacated, subject to the conveyance to the city of drainage and utility easements.
I think that would be a wise thing to do in this circumstance.
Yes, I'd add that. Drainage and utility easements that are subject to the approval of the city engineer.
Okay. Other council members have a same level of comfort in moving that language that's reflected in the whereas clause in the recital back down into the resolution itself?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to read that language one more time?
The following described right-of... It's now after the now therefore be resolved, number one, that the following described right-of-way is hereby vacated, subject to conveyance to the city of drainage and utility easements that are approved by the city engineer.
With that language change, is there a motion?
I have a question for Mr. Milner.
Mr. Milner?
So, I'm...
Oh, thank you, Member Stewart.
When I look at the diagram of the pipe, there's that extra blue pipe that comes off at kind of a 45-degree angle there. So, the new easement will cover both... So, somehow, the description of the easement area gets wider as you get closer to 42nd Street there.
Correct. It's going to start about where the mouse is right now and go down this side, so it's still going to be kind of a straight easement right on the edge. This is a smaller pipe, easier to maintain, don't need as much space.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sure, thank you.
So, I'll move the matter as the language was amended by...
So, I'll move the matter as the language was amended by Roger. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, that it's not uncommon, particularly in Morningside, that we've had an old road that may have been used as a road. I don't think this ever was. But, in one instance, it was just a couple of years ago, that there is what was an old road right by Susan B. Lindgren's school in St. Louis Park, and the property owner needed access to that old road in order to get into the garage of their home. Otherwise, they weren't going to be able to swing around enough to get into their driveway and into their garage. So, this kind of thing does happen, and so, the care that's taken to protect the stormwater utility, as long as we can do that, then we can provide residents with the ability to use the property that is available, but can't be used at this point. So...
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of the resolution as modified by Attorney Knudsen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Mr. Settler, thank you for coming this evening. You helped us create a better product here. It was a better outcome.
Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Douglas? Oh, not Douglas Settler. Bruce Douglas? Mr. Douglas, thank you. I misheard your last name. All right. That completes the public hearing portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And I see a lot of familiar faces here that have been involved in monitoring the work out at Braemar, and we thank you for all of that, and in fact, participating in some of the work. So, first item under the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda is a report out and a recommendation on the Braemar Park master plan. Director Catry?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hovland. Happy New Year to you. Thank you very much, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present the Braemar Park master plan for your review, and hopefully for your approval. I'd like to provide a brief overview of the process that helped us get to this point this evening. A request for proposal for urban design firms was advertised in March of 2017. Six proposals were received on April 27th, and four firms were interviewed on May 23rd. Interview team members included Edina Parks and Recreation Commissioners Miller, Struther, and McCormick; Edina residents Cindy Edwards, Dawn Martin, and Jeff Northrup; Edina Nordic ski coach Andy Turnbull; Edina High School Mountain Bike Club Tim Suddeth; Minnesota off-road cyclist Bill Begonik; and staff members Joe Booth, Susan Foss, and myself. The firm SRF was selected by the interview team. The SRF team partners are Applied Ecological Services and Trail Source LLC. The budget for the master plan was $55,000, and we anticipated it would take six to seven months for completion. The city council awarded the project to SRF on June 7th, or June 6th of 2017. A staff kickoff meeting was held on June 14th. Stakeholder interviews and inventory and analysis were completed in June. The Parks and Recreation Commission and city council provided feedback in July, and the first community open house was held on July 26th. The first concepts were presented to staff, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the city council in September, and the second community open house was held on September 18th. Based on all feedback received, the draft concepts were combined into one master plan, and a third community open house was held on October 23rd. More modifications were based on the feedback that we received at that open house, and a final master plan was completed on December 4th. As part of the community engagement for this project, three online surveys were conducted, along with the Speak Up Edina discussion. The city maintained a project website and provided regular updates and invitations via Nextdoor, Twitter, Facebook, and email. The final Braemar Park master plan was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission on December 12th, when the commission reviewed and recommended the plan. We believe that the final master plan represents the interests and desires of the Parks and Recreation Commission, hopefully the city council, and the residents who actively and passionately participated in this process. With that, I would like to introduce Ken Greshaber from SRF, who conducted the master plan with me, and Ken's going to go through a PowerPoint presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Greshaber.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ken Greshaber with SRF Consulting Group, and had mentioned both Applied Ecological Services was assisting us with the natural resource management component of the plan, and Trail Source, Tim Wagner, with some of the trail development recommendations that we're about to present. So, in addition to the master plan document, there are several appendices that include all the public survey and stakeholder outreach and input that we received during the master planning process for your review, and then there's additional appendices that also cover some of the more specifics on some of the natural resource recommendations moving forward, just as a reference for the document. So, I'm going to go through and just basically provide a summary of the document as it's presented, as a master plan. So, after we first initially met with all the stakeholders and the public early on in the meeting process, we really wanted to try to develop some initial initiatives for guiding some of our ideas and concepts for the recommendation. The first one was really about trying to improve that connectivity of trail systems throughout the park. As most of you know, Braemar Park is a large land resource with over 500 acres, and many of the amenities throughout the park are very disjointed and not very well-connected. So, that was kind of one of the first initiatives. We saw something to try to achieve. And then, the bigger one was really about all the user groups that showed up at our first master plan meeting with not only the high school, mountain bikers and skiers, but also walkers and other types of recreational user groups that were really more trail-focused. So, the whole notion of trying to improve and expand some of the trail circulation in the park. And then, we also had other stakeholders engage in the process that really wanted to have us look at additional recreational amenities that we can incorporate in the park, where land resources allowed. And then, the other big part with the Audubon certification on Braemar Golf Course, we really wanted to expand that notion and recommendation for other natural resources in the park. And then, finally, I think the whole notion importance of incorporating sustainable improvements that really promote being good stewards of the park and land, water resource in the park was really kind of an important initiative. So, as part of initial analysis, we kind of looked at the park in five distinct zones. The first zone really is really being the main entrance to the park with Courtney Fields and the complex abilities, including the Braemar Fieldhouse, arena, and the golf dome, and the outdoor ice rink. And how can we try to improve that zone as kind of more of an entry feature to the park? Zone two was really about trying to identify any opportunities that were available with the Hennepin County Works and Public Works, City Public Works facility, and we came to find out that there weren't many opportunities there with all the potential conflicts with expansion of those facilities. And zone three was really kind of where we really focused on trying to expand and integrate more of an expansive trail system that extends on the west, east, and south sides of the park. And then, zone four, we're really looking at the golf course and opportunities that might provide for users beyond golf course users. And then, zone five was really about looking at the Academy 9 and Hillary Lane and Braemar Boulevard, and what that could provide in terms of enhancing kind of a parkway feel for the park, which I'll talk about in a second. So, as part of the recommendations, I'll start with the trail systems. We're recommending about two miles of paved trail, which, most of that is located in around Courtney Fields and along Braemar Boulevard and the existing trail system along Hillary Lane. We have about three miles of soft-surface trail systems that are circumnavigating pretty much the entire golf course, with the exception of a connection on Braemar Boulevard. And then, we have roughly about six miles of mountain bike trails that are incorporated on both the east and west sides of the park. And then, we also have recommendations for about eight kilometers, five miles of cross-country ski trails in and on the golf course. So, this graphic illustrates in yellow the soft-surface trail system. Our biggest challenge was really trying to establish, if I can find my pointer, this connection through the Nine Mile Creek watershed corridor, wetland corridor. So, we have two significant boardwalk crossings that we'd have to build to make that connection from the existing trail all the way over to the east side of the park. We are proposing to add smaller loop trail systems along the east side of the park, and then eventually connecting people up to Braemar Boulevard, Hillary Lane, to continue that pedestrian connection. We're also proposing to pave the trails in a Class II aggregate surface for accessibility, which I think is an important component for us to try to achieve for the park. Yeah, so, when I get to the mountain bike trails, there is a portion of the trail, especially for the two boardwalk crossings, that we'd recommend as a dual-use trail. There are a lot of reasons for that. We think, we've seen a lot of other examples of parks where that can be achieved, and so, we really would probably be advocating for at least a minimum 12-foot wide boardwalks, so we can accommodate both those user groups in those two areas. And I mentioned the trail surfacing, the Class II aggregate, which we've used in a lot of projects, which is a surface that would probably extend some of the maintenance life of the trail. The notion of a boardwalk with rub rails, we'd have to build this about two feet above the ordinary high-water mark for the creek corridor, for flooding control and so on. The notion of incorporating some wetland overlooks along Nine Mile Creek and the wetland complex. And then, we're also proposing a little high-point overlook on the east side of the park that would provide an overlook of the golf course in the adjacent woodland area. So, moving on to the mountain bike trail plan developed by Tim Wagner, we have about, as I mentioned, six miles of trails. Each one of these trail systems on the east side and the west side of the park can easily be, has a circle-back way to get to the trail system. So, anybody that wants to bike on these trails, continue on one side, or they could continue as part of that joint-use trail and get to the east side of the park and use these trail systems. They're all one-way trail system. Some of the things Tim was really advocating for was really trying to make this a user-friendly mountain bike trail system, so families, children will be able to use the trail system. But then, we're also trying to introduce some challenge elements to the mountain bike trail, probably on either side of the trail, so if there is a more advanced rider, they can participate in some more additional, more challenging skills to develop. And then, we'd probably have one or two bypass trails that might have a steeper high climb for the high school kids if they want to train on some more challenging terrain. So, some of that detail would evolve in the next phase of development. As part of the ski trail layout plan, we have developed about eight K, five miles of trail.
Could I interrupt you for a moment, Mr. Greshaber?
Sure.
For that next phase of development, assuming the council approves the plan to, you know, move forward to the next phase, who would you get to help you with input on that issue, other than our consultants? Are you going to go back to the community itself, the mountain biking community, and some of the people on the committee?
Yes, there definitely have to be some additional outreach. Once we, basically, what would be done, there'd be a lot more field verification of the trail system and working with adjacent residents. Right now, the mountain bike trail system is proposed to have a minimum 100-foot buffer with all the adjacent residents, mostly on the east side of the park that would be impacted. And then, we're also establishing a minimum 50-foot buffer with the trail system with the golf course. We don't have any conflicts between the golf course users and the trail users.
Yeah. With respect to the trail users, I just think we've got a lot of folks that have a lot of ideas and a lot of abilities to help get us the best product for our town that we can have.
Yes, there's a lot of great volunteers. I know that, not only about designing, implementing the trail, but maintaining the trail system. I think there are a lot of great programs that either engage in the high school kids or other mountain bike advocate volunteers to maintain the trail system could be a great success for implementing trails here.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in with a question quick?
Member Fisher?
So, related to the mountain bike trails, can you, I'm still struggling trying to understand, if it's family-friendly, so anyone can do it, how do you then make it challenging enough so the advanced folks would enjoy it? I'm not quite understanding how you pull that off.
So, the way Tim Wagner has defined it is you'd have this straight-line alignment for the trail. So, if somebody wanted to travel along the existing center line of the trail, that would be the easy part of the trail system. There could be a small segue that'd be off to the side of the trail, or a small, I call them some tail trail that could provide more challenge, whether that's a boardwalk, sub-boulder, rock garden climbs, or just anything, or maybe actually, it's a little jump that somebody can get air on their mountain bike. That could be incorporated on the side of the trail.
So, it's running parallel.
Adjacent to it.
Essentially one trail, but you can choose a slightly more difficult piece of it.
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. So, jumping back to the ski trail plan, we have developed a, this is all preliminary layout. There is a lot of sensitivities about how we laid out this trail based on all the new improvements that are occurring on the golf course, but we've tried to lay out a trail system that would provide access to the clubhouse building as a warming shelter, avoiding all the greens and tee boxes and so on. Then, we also integrated a couple of portions of trail that potentially could be incorporated along the walking trail in the woods on the east and west sides of the park. We'd be advocating for grooming the trail for both classic and skate, skiing, so grooming a trail on the golf course that's 14 to 16 feet wide to accommodate both those users. I think in the past, the city has just groomed the trail for skating, but we'd be advocating for the acquisition of some additional equipment to set tracks on the golf course. It's part of those recommendations. So, that's a quick summary of the trails. Moving on with other site improvements, we looked at several areas. The focus for the golf course was really in and around the parking lot area. As you enter on John Harris Drive, we saw a lot of potential conflicts that we could start to avoid with pedestrians as they park in the parking lot and want to get into the golf learning center or the golf clubhouse. But, the biggest challenge we saw immediately was there's no really accessible route to get to the clubhouse and restaurant area. And so, we came up with some, just looking at preliminary contours and topography of the site, the notion of simplifying the entry experience, still allowing for drop-off areas in front of the driving range, but then creating a new turnaround, moving it farther north of the clubhouse, which would allow, there'd have to be some slight grading adjustments made to the parking lot. But, we feel like there's plenty of opportunities to create a more accessible route for anybody that parks here and needs to get into the clubhouse or to the other golf course trail systems. The other thing we're advocating for in terms of sustainability was the idea of potentially incorporating some permanent paving in the parking bays. The watershed district, that potentially is a project for them to contribute for funding mechanisms, but right now, the parking lot is currently just sheet draining off into the existing storm ponds. So, we think that'd be one way to really try to initiate some sustainability components to site improvements. The other thing that we're achieving here is a separate loading and access for the restaurant facility, which is currently all in the same turnaround drop-off area. So, it's really about just trying to segregate uses to, for the different user groups. And then, the final recommendation was the notion of adding either platform tennis or pickleball courts adjacent to the golf learning holes. And right now, there seem to be mixed opinions about whether we should try to think about incorporating both platform tennis, which is really more of the winter use idea, where you have a raised platform that's heated underneath for winter use, which has more of a cage-type application. That's almost a combination of tennis and racquetball. And then, everybody knows about the popularity of pickleball courts, and so, we seem to have kind of varying opinions about what those courts should be. The only good news is both the dimensions for pickleball and platform tennis are identical, so in terms of space configuration, we could make that work in a multitude of different ways. The other thing that's being implemented as part of the public improvements is the lawn court area, which my understanding is going in as part of golf course improvements. Moving on to Courtney Fields, I think everybody recognized the biggest challenge for Courtney was the whole notion of not really having an accessible route to get to the playing fields, and the whole sense of entry to the Courtney Fields complex is a little rough on the edges, especially where the maintenance entry heads down to the maintenance facility and the storage and so on that's happening there. So, we looked at how we might be able to try to accommodate an accessible path, and we do think there could be an opportunity to develop a longer accessible path, excuse me, along the east side of the trail that would basically follow the frontage and transition down and provide access to the ballfield complex along this route. So, that'd be one way for us to achieve an accessible route. The other thing we were looking at with the removal of Braemar, with the addition of Braemar Field, there was a removable play area or playground. So, we were looking at the idea of incorporating a new playground facility. So, we were looking at the idea of incorporating a new playground facility adjacent to the maintenance facility. And we think there'll be a lot of fun opportunities to build a play area that could be terraced into the grade as you transition down into the ballfield complex. The Baseball Association was also advocating for a small, little hillside seating area out in right field, at Field One. And there are additional enhancements the Baseball Association is pursuing for a baseball field grandstand, which is kind of the big thing. We're seeing a lot of premier baseball fields around the Twin Cities and the whole notion for shade and, of course, a playground equipment for the play area. And then, moving on with Braemar Arena and the parking lot, we understand that the parking lot is really, has been designed for maximum capacity of cars, but it doesn't really provide much of an entry experience into the park. So, once again, we'd be advocating for the use of more permeable paving in the parking bays, which really is, I think, a nice way to soften and try to make parking lots more attractive than what they are. And we also think there are plenty of opportunities to develop more boulevard tree plantings and tree plantings in islands and parking lots and so on to really soften, soften the appearance of the parking lot and make it a lot more welcoming. The other thing, we were playing with the idea of, as part of Braemar Field, trying to duplicate some of those enhancements with some of the metal screening and updated signage at the building entry to kind of give it a more unified look.
Mr. Mayor, I can interrupt. Mr. Greshawber, I like the idea of breaking up the parking lot a little bit with some boulevard-type plantings and things. I'm wondering if we couldn't do something similar on that big chunk of asphalt down by the golf course and have more plantings. There's a little bit of greenery in that parking lot in addition to the permeable pavers.
Yes, and, yep, there is no doubt there'd be opportunities for it. Yep, yep. It is, it is a very sterile parking lot, I'd agree. But the notion of trying to incorporate more islands or tree planting islands would be another great addition.
Okay, thank you.
Good comment, thank you.
So, the final component that's included in the master plan, and a lot of this is underway, most of you have seen some of the new park signs that have been installed in a lot of the parks around town. The notion of incorporating the park sign, entry signs at Hillary Lane and the frontage road entry off of Braemar Boulevard, as well as along the 169 exit. And then, we'd be advocating for more directional signage as part of this sign. So, I think working with the sign vendors, I think the whole notion of providing more directional signage, both at the parking lot entries and then as you turn onto Braemar Boulevard, and then, of course, another one identified at the Valley View Road intersection with Braemar. So, the natural resource component, we went and inventoried the existing natural resources within the park, looking at the, there's actually a wide variety of woodlands, wetlands, some oak savanna in a couple areas, some wooded wetland areas and so on. We saw some opportunities for developing some more upland prairie that could be as part of the trail system, the walking trail system for people to engage and interact with. We started talking about priorities. One thing we'd be really advocating for in terms of natural resource restoration, removal of invases, is doing kind of an integral improvement with natural resource management, as well as developing the trail systems, which I think would be a great way to pursue that as an important component of developing the trails. The second priority, we're really focused on doing some invasive removals and restoring some of the woodland, upland woodland areas within the golf course area. And then, the third priority was the wetland complexes. And those have a lot more challenges for restoration, and that's where those were kind of really identified as third priorities. So, as part of the master plan recommendations, we did come up with a very preliminary cost estimates for improvements. We've developed a preliminary estimate of roughly $6.5 million to integrate everything shown as part of the master plan recommendations. All of these areas would be subjected to a lot more design refinement in terms of next level of design and detail analysis. But that is, we saw as a place to start where you can see where some of the financial resources are placed throughout the park. So, that is a quick summary of the recommendations, and I'd be open to entertain any questions or comments.
No, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Greshawber or Director Cattery? Comments from folks? Member Brennall, go ahead, and Member Stewart.
Sure, all right. Just a clarification, in the information we received, I think there was also a whole variety of trees that would go in. And I just want to clarify, is that, does that include the trees that are being added on the golf course itself and not, this is, oh, really?
No, those would be additional trees.
Additional to what's happening on the golf course itself?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Member Fisher.
So, I have a question. I'm looking at the trail system for the cross-country skiing. My understanding is that's really only when we have enough snow. And so, how do you, because it is in and around the golf course, how do you, I mean, clearly, there'll be times where there won't be cross-country skiing, but it's those marginal times where there might be, it's okay with some tree cover, and then, you're out where it's exposed by the sun. How do you control the, you know, people using it and actually having some destructive elements happen with the grass underneath or whatever? Is there any operational suggestions there?
Yeah, I guess, I think most of that would probably have to do with some type of notification system that'd have to be in place, whether at the golf course, probably at the clubhouse, about trails being open or closed. That would be my first response, to try to find a way to make sure there aren't people out there trying to ski in areas that, where snow is minimal depth, where you potentially cause damage to the golf course.
And I agree with that as well, Councilmember Fisher. The other thing that I would add as part of the Nordic Ski Trail Design was an attempt to do our best to stay away from the main playing areas of the golf course. So, I think it's important to note that we feel that this plan is preliminary at this point. We don't really want to finalize a Nordic Ski Trail Plan until the golf course is absolutely finished and we're sure that we're comfortable with every alignment. Although, we did work closely, not only with this consulting team, we also worked closely with Richard Mandala, our golf course architect, to help lay out this plan. But I think you raise a really good point. It's going to be really important to us that people use the trails when they're available and people stay on the trails, because we don't want people cutting across places on the golf course that would damage greens, tees, and even fairways.
Now, I think with that said, there are always operational challenges. But what I really like about this plan is it's layering so many different interests on this property. And, you know, it's such an amazing park that if you can have more than just golfers out there enjoying that, those view sheds and that, that opportunity, I think it's great. So, I'm excited about those different potentials. It's just, it'll be, there'll be some challenges to it, I think.
Yeah, I think the winter walkers is also the user group. We've seen that trend, that more people just want to get out to walk in the winter. So, I think, depending on snow conditions, I think having the soft-surface trails available for winter walking is also a great amount to have.
I think Member Fisher's made a wonderful point. And when you, you know, when you've got over 500 acres of property predominantly used by the golf course, it's historic home, obviously. And now, having that improved, it really gave us a chance to think about what else could we do out there to make this a more year-round facility and give folks an opportunity to really enjoy it in so many different ways. When you get into the Chapter Five, there really isn't a next steps section in there. There's the preliminary cost estimate. And we're looking at an $8.1 million number for everything that we think we want to do, assuming that the plan gets approved this evening. And when I look at some of the cost components and I think about, where do you get a big bang for the buck? It's really on the mountain bike trail system. And we've had some, I think all of us have probably had people contact us to say, you know, we realize it may take a while to figure out how to come up with 8.1 million, but gee, maybe at the front end of the sequencing, we ought to be thinking about the mountain bike trail system for about a quarter of a million dollars. And then, if you add it in the pedestrian hiking trail improvements, another 600,000, at least on a preliminary estimate basis. Have you given that any thought in terms of sequencing or prioritizing things based on cost as opposed to some other methodology?
Mayor Houdland, thank you for the question. Honestly, we haven't given a lot of thought to prioritization and sequencing at this point. We hope to get your feedback this evening. And I can tell you that we did have a fairly substantive conversation about this at the Parks and Recreation Commission when they reviewed and recommended the project. And I think what they hoped was if the council was interested in, you know, possibly looking at a next step and possibly phasing, would be we kind of kick the project back to the Parks and Recreation Commission and have them give a recommendation as to how we could potentially phase the project. The one thing that I would like to note as it relates to the trails is there are some other complicating factors that make it not quite as easy to just say, okay, it would cost, you know, X amount of dollars for the mountain bike trails and X amount of dollars for the, for the walking trails, because it would require a fairly significant amount of restoration, native restoration, plant restoration, tree restoration along with that. And we would hope to work on some of those things together as we put trails in, remove buckthorn, you know, plant some, some more robust types of natural borders as we remove buckthorn and that sort of a thing. So, we would also have to look at, if we were looking at those two types of trail systems, we'd have to look at some native restoration along with that as well. For example, one thing that we talked about on both sides of the east hill, on the golf course side of the east hill, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing with the, with the environment to remove buckthorn. But we also want to leave enough of a barrier so that golfers aren't having the visual distraction of mountain bikers whizzing past them. On the other side of the hill where the residents are, we've made a substantial commitment to them also to make sure that they don't have the constant visual of mountain bikers going through there. So, what we would like to do is discuss a staging process of possible, possibly planting some trees to get them slightly established and then do buckthorn removal so that the trees are creating the healthy barrier to replace the buckthorn. So, we'd like to, we'd like to explore some of those opportunities as well as part of the trail project.
Good. Well, you know, I made myself a hard copy of the recommendations because I just kind of wanted to have it at my desk. It's a wonderful plan. I commend your consultancy. It was really helpful and all of the folks it served. And I think it's worth, I'm really pleased that you pointed out all the people on the committee, because I think they should be commended too for some wonderful work. Member Staunton.
Just wanted to ask a little, and maybe you could put up the, just one of the maps that shows the whole Braemar Park. There was something in the conversation about signage that triggered a thought for me. And you talked a little bit about directional signage. You know, we've had, we've had the Tin Fish at the clubhouse, and we're going to have a new vendor there eventually. And if, you know, as I think about this, Braemar as a destination, even for people who live in the community and a gathering place, you know, a place like Tin Fish or whatever will follow it, is really important. And so, it's important when you're up in the hockey and dome and baseball area to know about that as well. I was wondering if there was any thought given within the scope of this master planning process to that, as well as whether it's worth exploring something up on the top where the hockey and the dome and the baseball are in terms of another restaurant site or location that would be more of a, more substantive than just a concession stand?
Councilmember Staunton, I'll address the wayfinding question first and completely agree. We felt that the, the wayfinding in the park system, in that park currently is almost nonexistent. And we have some good ideas incorporated in this plan. And in fact, we've already started to incorporate with signage as part of the first phase of the park signage project. And we are currently designing some more directional signs and wayfinding signs for the second phase of the park signage project, which will be going in next spring. So, you'll already start to see some of those signage improvements. Regarding a restaurant on the, on the upper level, you know, somewhere over near the Braemar Field potentially, that is not included in this plan, but certainly could be something that we would, we could consider if you would like.
Yeah, I certainly think, you know, it may be one of those things that evolves over time, and it depends on space availability and those kinds of things. But it is a long trek from those activities up there to the golf clubhouse, no matter how good the wayfinding signage is. The other thing that I'll just repeat again that I've talked about in the past is from a communications perspective, as we, as we move forward with Braemar, it seems to me to make sense to have it be, you know, leverage that brand to, when people go to our website and they look for Braemar. I mean, I don't know exactly how you do it, but it seems to me like people ought to see Braemar as the whole thing and realize, because I think a lot of people go to Braemar and they kind of forget there's a golf course when they're on the other side. They forget there's a hockey arena when they're on the golf course side. They forget there's baseball fields. And it really is an amazing place, and especially if we're going to start to create these trails where you can circumnavigate it on foot, where we're starting to create activities that are going to happen year-round, we ought to be making people aware that there's a whole variety of activities going on. So, wherever they are in the park, they're aware that there's other parts of the park as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Member Fisher.
You know, you're so right, Councilmember Staunton. Each of us spends time in different parts of this park. And I spend many hours over in the baseball complex and always trying to encourage other parents who tend to like, want to meet and go out to eat before or during or between games. I'm like, go over to Tin Fish, you know, go over to the city's complex. And they, they tend to go elsewhere. So, I think you make a good point. But we wouldn't want to cannibalize what we're trying to do at the golf course either. So, we have to be careful there. I think one of the interesting features of this master plan is actually the road that's there already. And I really like what you're contemplating with the parkway kind of feel, because I think what's theirs could be absolutely magnificent. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a road that we use and to cut through the park, but if it were treated more like a parkway and people behaved like a parkway and you could have the pedestrian movement along there, I think it could be unbelievable. And again, it's a whole, potentially another segment of our population that might not even be able to get out and walk, but they can kind of enjoy the park in that way. I do have a question, and maybe you haven't gotten to this level of detail, but I know a lot of baseball players, for instance, park along that road and enter the baseball complex from that side. Would that be something that you'd be encouraging or discouraging in that setting?
We did look at that, because it sounds like it's kind of this lawless parking area that people park and probably they don't receive citations. But we just didn't see a lot of great opportunities for doing any type of pole-in parking there based on the sightlines that are, that are in right on, you know, as that Hillary Lane, Braemar Boulevard transition there. That's just a very, a tough intersection to get good sightlines. The only thing we might be advocating for is maybe more of a controlled intersection at Valley View to help slow some of the traffic along that area. But it's a, there's also that, that storm pond area. So, it's a tough little space to try to show, been parking right at that where it's currently being used. So, we, I guess we'd be advocating for maybe not having that parking, and hopefully, this, this new accessible route would be, almost serve the same purpose if people get used to that, that behavior to access the ballfield complex. But I recognize it's a convenience thing for a lot of people.
Sure. I'm just kind of curious about the capacity of parking, because on the upper side where you're showing the improvements to the parking on that whole upper area, it looks like we're losing a little bit of parking up there. And if there's a major hockey game or something going on, it can really fill up. And I'm never an advocate of building a lot of parking lots all over, but I think we just just got to be a little conscious of where overflow is or, you know, how that works when you have multiple events going on. I don't have any great solutions for you, just throwing it out there.
Anyone else? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the Braemar Park master plan, and I'm going to add and send it back to the park board for a recommendation on phasing the various elements of the plan. That's consistent with what you were requesting council to do.
That would be great, Mayor Hugland. Thank you.
Second?
Got a motion and a second on that particular motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Great. Here we go. Next phase. Thanks for coming this evening, and happy new year to all of you. All right. Next is the board and commission reappointment matter, and Manager Neal has this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, each year at this time, we make an inquiry to our existing board and commission members who have expiring terms as to whether they would wish to be reappointed again by the city council. The folks that we have on the list tonight for you to take a look at are folks who have said they wish to be reappointed. We traditionally present this to you as a slate, and we ask, we recommend that you approve it.
Thank you. Questions for Manager Neal? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the board and commission reappointments as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? Next matter, yeah, Member Fisher, comment.
This would probably be a good time to let people know that there's still time, if you're interested in being on a board or commission, to put into, is there an application that you can fill out?
Yes, there is.
I think through the end of, through January 26th, I think that's right?
Available on our website.
On our website.
Yeah. So, opportunities.
And we would encourage council members, if you wanted to recruitment, this is also a good time to recruit folks that you've been in contact with as well.
Thank you.
Well, and just a quick shout out to say thank you to all of our commissioners on our boards and commissions because that's important work that we rely on.
Here, here. They're great volunteers.
Yeah. And so, so just a huge thank you from all of us.
Thank you for that, Member Brindle. All right. Next matter is a Resolution 201808, which is a resolution authorizing us to accept various grants and donations. We need a four-fifths vote on this. Is there any, is there a motion, first of all?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donations specified in the resolution on behalf of the city Edina, say aye. 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 Opposed? Carried? Couple of noteworthy items embodied in this resolution. For those of you interested in wrestling, there's a donation from the community foundation of almost $1,000 for the wrestling program. Tomorrow night, actually, I think between 3:00 and 5:00, they're dedicating the new wrestling room at the high school, which is part of the remodeling project. So Edina High School, I think rightly so, is back in the wrestling business, and that's a good thing to be in. There's a lot of kids, I think, that'll benefit from that and enjoy that kind of a sport. And then the Edina Baseball Association, and Member Fisher may have had something to do with this, at least in years gone by, they gave us a matching grant to match one we were able to get from the county of $100,000 to help with lighting over at the baseball fields. And so we've got a total of 200,000, I think, to work with, or 237,000, something in that neighborhood. So a big shout out for the Edina Baseball Association. And then crime prevention, Member Brindle's a member of the Edina Crime Prevention Board, 15,000 for the bike patrol, 16,000 for the motorcycle program for 2017, a little contribution to the K-9 Retirement Fund, and then a contribution for the Foot Patrol for 2017 at 50th and France. So, Member Brindle, please thank all of the members of that particular board for their generosity.
I will. And Chief Nelson, it's, you know, we just have such a great police department to work with. One of the donations in here, the motorcycle program, we have had a program going for quite a number of years where the police department leases motorcycles at a dollar a year. And then you put some money into outfitting the motorcycle with the Edina insignia and some other stuff to make it a police motorcycle. And that program ended, and we still want to have a motorcycle program. And so it's my understanding, if I recall the minutes from our meeting when we were talking about that, Chief, that we're going to go from two motorcycles to one, and we're going to own that motorcycle.
Correct.
Yeah. And so the crime fund put up the dollars to make that happen.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Member Fisher?
So I just want to mention that the Edina Baseball Association, the $100,000, I actually had nothing to do with that. But the association, I mean, that's a great matching amount that goes with the Hennepin County grant. And interestingly, those improvements, the lighting and the safety netting, were both in this master plan that we just approved. So it's nice to see that there are little elements of the plan that are going to start happening. So that was really great.
Good. Thank you. All right. Onto the next section of the agenda, and that's correspondence and petitions. Is there anything that has come in this evening that was not otherwise on the dais?
Everything's here.
All right. Thank you, Manager Neal. Anything from an aviation noise update standpoint, Member Brindle?
No. We had our meeting of the community members, and the NAC doesn't meet every month, so I can't offhand remember when our next meeting is, but there hasn't been anything taking place since then.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Manager Neal, anything from an aviation?
No. Nothing more.
Mayor and council comments? Member Fisher?
I don't have any special comments tonight, other than happy new year.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Yeah, I just wanted to draw our attention to the advisory communication from the Energy and Environment Commission suggesting that we add an item to their work plan on reducing salting. There's some interesting thinking going on. There's been a lot of good work on trying to reduce the amount of salt we use to melt snow on roads. And the good news is that our governmental entities are getting better and not putting down excessive amounts of salt. But private contractors who have to worry about liability from slip and fall accidents are inclined to use more because they don't, you know, they don't have protection against that. And so there's some discussion going around in the metro area and beyond about trying to pass some legislation at the state that would give some liability protection to those commercial providers that would, if they followed a certain best practices, then would get limited liability for a slip and fall accident. And given the things we've learned this year about chloride in our waterways and how difficult that is to get out once it gets in, I think that's something worth really pursuing. And I know Luann Waddick, who is one of the members of our Energy and Environment Commission, has been working very hard on this and brought it to the Energy and Environment Commission. So I appreciated their advisory communication, and I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be inclined to authorize them, if we can, to go ahead and put together something on that that can bring us some recommendations.
Sure. Thanks. Other thoughts, or should we embrace that recommendation? I concur.
Yeah, we should. Matter of fact, I have a cup on my desk, and I keep meaning to bring it to council meetings because it's that amount of salt and that's all you need. And the other thing that Luann does that I think is laudable, that we could all do, and that is when you see excess salt, sweep it up and don't let it go into the water system. And that she does as well, because if it's sitting there, it's going to eventually make its way into the storm sewer. And, but she does, she's very vigilant. And so we're lucky.
She can't do it by herself.
No. And she can't do the whole city by herself. And I did see some little piles that were, you know, it's inevitable when it's done with a machine that sometimes the spray is going to be perfect and sometimes it's not. But I will someday remember to bring this, but it's no bigger than about a 10-ounce cup, and that's all you need. And there are also things that aren't salt that can be used.
Make a motion, Member Staunton?
Sure. I'd move that we authorize the Energy and Environment Commission to add this item to their work plan per their request in the advisory commission, or the advisory communication.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? All right. Member Brindle?
Yes.
Will you finish, Member Staunton?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well, and all of you.
Yes. And everybody out there.
All right. Member Stewart?
Thank you. I too will wish everyone a happy new year. And just coming up here next Tuesday, January 9th, there is an open house here at City Hall regarding the Arden Park renovation that's coming up. So all are welcome. That open house goes from 5:00 o'clock to 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just checking my calendar, that wrestling room open house is from 4:00 to 5:00 tomorrow. There's also a opening reception at the Edina Arts Center, Hola Cuba, photographed by Barbara Lavellur. And then tomorrow night, I'm going to attend an event at the El Amon Center Mosque in Minnetoka with some of the other west suburban mayors.
Oh, cool.
And meet those folks. So let's see what else. For me, just, you know, over the holidays, had a meeting with the, Manager Neal and I met with the school superintendent and the chair of the school board on the 20th for breakfast and had a conversation about a lot of different items. And then on the 30th, I stopped over at the House of Cal Simmons, one of our residents who lives right by Arden Park, and there's some issues there related to the, potential issues, I should say, related to the remeander of the creek. And I think, it sounds like staff's on top of it, it sounds like Ross Bintner's been over there and, as well as Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. I think things will work out fine, so I won't belabor that point. Manager Neal, that's it for me.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things for me. First, just to let you know that our first work session of the year will be at our January 17th work session, our council night. And our work session that night is a joint meeting with our legislative delegation. So we try to schedule that pretty early in the year for the council and also for the legislators. All three of our legislative delegation will have agreed to attend, so we're expecting them there that night.
It's going to snow.
Which will be, it will be an awful night of snow and sleet and wind and horrible traffic, which is...
Tradition.
Yeah. Right. Right. It'll be better. Anyway, they will, they'll all be there. And the other scheduling item I have is, at our last council meeting, I wanted you to start thinking about whether you were going to attend National League of Cities, Congressional Cities Conference this year. It's March 10th through the 14th, and we'll need to, yep, it's in front of you, so we'll need to have commitments about who's going probably by this time next week. And our management fellow, Shanti Mitchell, will reach out to you to...
Great.
...get that from you. That's all I have.
Very good. That prompt anything from any of the other council members? Any new thoughts? Otherwise, we'll adjourn the council meeting and reconvene the HRA, or convene the HRA, I should say. Council member, council meeting stands adjourned. Thank you. Calling to order the meeting of the Edina Housing Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mencken.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Staunton?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Chair Hugland?
Here. We've got a proposed form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening, and we need to consider adding one item, amending the agenda to add a motion at the end here. Let me see where... Adding is item 6F. And that would be a motion to close the meeting of the Edina HRAs permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C to discuss the possible purchase of real property in the Pentagon Park, the Pentagon Park property, which has multiple addresses on 77th, 7710 Computer Avenue, 7600 Park Lawn Avenue, and five addresses on West 77th Street. So if we could amend the agenda to add that to the end of our agenda.
So moved.
Second, we've got a motion and a second to amend the agenda as stated. Discussion, all those in favor of amending the agenda as stated, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? All right. Back to the, back to the, we added the amendment, now back to the amended agenda in its entirety. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? And community comment? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? I see no one in the audience. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the items on the consent agenda by a single Any further discussion there? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as shown, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? Where did I get sidetracked here?
Reports and recommendations?
Yep. All right. Reports and recommendations, we've got the appointment of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary of the HRA. And there is, let me see here. This is a voice vote, simple majority. And the...
Normally, these would be on your consent agenda, but we just couldn't get it submitted together.
Yeah, I'm just, there's my HRA. Bear with me a moment. So the recommendation is that the, that the mayor serve as the chair, Member Stewart's been serving as secretary and as vice chair. And if you're comfortable with that slate for the upcoming calendar year 2018, we'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second? Motion and second to appoint the mayor, the chair, and the, and Member Stewart as the vice chair and secretary of the Edina Housing Redevelopment Authority for 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried? And then we need to appoint an executive director, and the recommendation, as it was in '17, is to appoint the city manager as the executive director of the Edina HRA. Any discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion and a second, now a discussion?
No possibility I can run against him for this? No. Fine.
Keeping it light.
All right. Any other comments or quips? All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Carried? And then we have to designate for the HRA an official newspaper as well. It's the Edina Sun Current, embodied in Resolution 201801. That would be designating the official newspaper for 2018 as the Edina Sun Current for the HRA. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second with regard to the, designating the official newspaper. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And then we've got a depository motion that we need to pass, 201802 for the HRA. The resolution would designate U.S. Bank, Wells Fargo, and Tradition Capital Bank as being authorized to do banking business with the Edina Housing Redevelopment Authority. Any further thought there? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion on 201802.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve 201802, designating the named depositories to work with the HRA in 2018. Any further discussion? All those in... work with the HRA in 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And then we have
Meeting schedule?
HRA schedule, proposed meeting schedule for 2018. And is there a motion to approve the 2018 HRA meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve the 2018 HRA meeting schedule. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Should we just make it clear that it's not the same as it's been in the past?
Yes. Good idea.
Oh, yeah, that is a good idea.
So basically, we're looking at Thursday morning meetings on the opposite, on the other weeks that we're not having council meetings. Those are
Same week.
Scott?
Yeah, they're generally the scheduled, the schedule fits nice to be the second and fourth Thursday most of the time. There are some variations from that when, when we've had some variations in our council meeting schedule, but for the most part.
But it's on our city schedule.
Yeah, it is.
Anyone can go and see that. And, and the purpose, just to make it clear, is that we've been having HRA meetings at 2:00 in the morning. So it's not that we want to have obscure meetings. It's that we have to find times of the week and times of the day that aren't 2:00 in the morning.
Right. And in staff's view, we think that you're going to have more HRA business in the upcoming year or two. So I think this is necessary.
I just want to make sure it was clear because we're just
Sure. Well, one of the other issues that was raised by one of our residents was where would the HRA meet? Not necessarily in closed session, like we're going to discuss momentarily, but would, you know, the idea was that it would be better for residents if we would generally meet in council chambers. And then if we had to adjourn to a closed session, we could go upstairs as we've done in the past. I don't know if council members have had a time to think about that or not. I don't know. All of you have received that communication. It seemed to me like that made some sense in our ongoing
It costs, we've, Jennifer and I talked about it today. It's about a $5,000 cost to add audiovisual staff to, for that number of meetings over a year's timeframe, if we do them in this room.
Well, so one could, should we discuss that issue now? Or do you want to discuss it in more depth at the first meeting of the HRA?
It's your call. We, we, your previous, your previous decision was to have them in the community room. So we've booked the community room out for the year. We had to move a few groups out of that space to enable HR meetings. Not very many, but a couple. We would never, almost never have to move somebody out of this space at 7:30 in the morning.
I don't recall why. Is it, was it a cost reason?
No. I was really just, that meeting seems to occur, there's better dialogue and sightlines in terms of sitting around a table.
Yeah, there is.
But that's
That's true.
There's, there's no, there's no legal statutory other operational reason to do it up there other than here.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
And the meetings up there are all recorded.
They are.
So the difference is you just can't
See us.
See us. You can hear us. But you're right, that the one thing that when we have HRA meetings, it's oftentimes with our consultant teams and other things, it's really more of a working meeting than this is. And so that is a distinguishing factor that makes that meeting room work more efficiently. It's just a matter of if we feel that we're being transparent enough in that process.
I think that's it. And I think that's a council decision. What do we think we're being transparent enough by having it up there in the community room?
And the transparency seems to cut both ways. Having a meeting at 2:00 in the morning doesn't feel transparent for people who would like to attend the meeting. And it's just, how can you expect people to be there at 2:00 AM? So 7:30 in the morning, I think, would work better for people who want to attend those meetings. But in terms of the recording, if they wanted to watch a video recording, you know, if we're in the, if we're in the community room, we don't have that option really. So, but I, I think as a workspace, it works better up there. That's, that's why I liked it.
Director Teague, maybe this goes, broader question maybe for Manager Neal as well. In some of the other communities you've worked in, when you have HRA work to be done, and I'm thinking about Minnetonka, because it seems to me, at times I've been over to Minnetonka City Hall, and the HRA or the planning commissioner, you know, they're not meeting in the council chambers. They're meeting in one of the downstairs rooms to do their regular work. And it's, it's still a public venue. There's still, when appropriate, the public hearing in that particular room.
Do you want to comment on that? It's the prairie rooms that are in the, kind of the basement of the city center building.
And that's the way it was at Minnetonka as well. And they did those in the morning.
And, you know, the reality is that HRA business is far more apt to have closed sessions than, than city council, just because of the nature of that work. And it's a little awkward to constantly be shuffling upstairs and back and forth. And, you know, for that reason, I think it's much more, it makes more sense to meet up there.
Well, maybe we should start the year up there and see how it goes.
We'll keep with that plan then unless we, unless the council changes sometime and we, then we can move in here.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, people comfortable with that?
Yep.
I thought that was good input on that issue. Thank you, all of you.
Did we vote?
On the schedule, we have not voted yet.
No, we have not. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the 2018 HRA meeting schedule. Member Fisher, thanks for the, the catch on the change in the meeting schedule. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the 2018 HRA meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And then the final item that we did add to the HRA agenda is a discussion that we have, that we intend to have with regard to the possible purchase of real property. Because it involves a potential purchase of real property, we have the right to go into closed session. So is there a motion to close the meeting of the Edina HRA as permitted by Minnesota Statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3 to discuss the possible purchase of real property in Pentagon Park located at 4901, 4820, 4815, 4510, 4530, 4540, 4550, 4570, 4600, and 4660, West 77th Street, and 7710 Computer Avenue and 7600 Park Lawn Avenue. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor of closing the meeting to discuss possible purchase of that real property in Pentagon Park as described, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We are now moved into closed session and we're going to go up to the community room to have that discussion. And then we will come back into open session in the community room and close up the HRA meeting upstairs.